All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the lower Paxton Township manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a very brief summary of tonight's board meeting, particularly of the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. Tonight, the board is meeting in its typical business session. And it has a number of action items on the agenda here. Beginning first, under old business, the board will take action to adopt ordinance 23-05, which amends the codified ordinances related to solid waste collection. Next, after this, the board will take action to adopt ordinance 23-06 relating to the establishment of procedures for the installation of new streetlights. After this, the board will take action to adopt ordinance 23-08, which authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds, that being for series 2024, related to sewer and stormwater work. After this, finally, under new business, the board will tend to the administration of a loyalty oath for two individuals for the Linglestown Fire Company, police, fire police out of the Linglestown Fire Company. Following that, the board will take action to adopt resolution 2023-31, which establishes the signatory authority for a pending township PENDOT grant. After that, the board will take action to approve an easement agreement with Violia Water Company of Pennsylvania relative to a project within one of our parks. Following, finally, the board will take action on improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills. And then finally, hear any final announcements before making a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the board are prepared, are seated, and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. Call this meeting the lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. We'd like to ask everyone to please stand. Supervisor Judd will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will take us to approval of minutes, of which we have none. So we will avoid that. The Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session prior to this meeting, and will do so again following. At this point, time is set aside for public comment. Public comment is for an item not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to address the board on an item on the agenda, we can have comment at that time. Would anybody like to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Mr. Minsker?
Good evening, members of the board. I notice on the agenda tonight there is material about a streetlight ordinance, not related to that. But I have three items on my mind, which I'd like you to consider, maybe even answer. The first of these is a reminder to you, every year I've passed on this item left over from the Village of Linglestown project. The only remaining item not yet taken care of is the installation of a streetlight at the intersection of the bypass and Blue Mountain Parkway. The pole is there, the electricity is there, the only thing missing is the streetlight. And I would request that during 2024, whatever consideration is being given to the installation of new lights in the township, that we finally install that light at that kind of a crazy intersection. Again, this is at the intersection of the bypass and the existing Blue Mountain Parkway. The second and third item deal with the streetlights that we have right now. I'm noticing on a number of places, I'll give you two examples. On Blue, on North Mountain Road, there are streetlights that are on all the time. They don't go off. And I'm curious, Sam, maybe you can answer this. Do we pay a fee to PP&amp;L on usage, or do we pay a flat fee? Because those lights, if they're on all the time and we're paying usage fees, we're paying for electricity we shouldn't be paying for.
It is a mixture, actually, based on the type of bulb that's installed within the units, whether it's a per bulb charge or a usage.
Okay, these are these LED lights, I think, the newer flat-type streetlights. So somebody may want to look into that, especially if we're paying for usage rather than just paying for having a light there. The second item is streetlights that are burned out. In Linglestown, we had our very successful tree lighting carolsing on Sunday. And we have numerous streetlights in Linglestown that are owned by PP&amp;L that are burnt out. And they don't apparently maintain those lights. I'm curious whether we pay a fee for that per day, even though the lights are burnt out, we're paying for those lights, or if we're only paying for usage. So these are just things I wish someone would look at. And if there needs to be some rectification there, that that would be done. Thank you.
Bill, when we talked last week, had you called PP&amp;L about replacing the bulbs?
No.
Okay.
We can do that. What they request is the pole number for each light. And then, we've done this in the past, after requesting that they do this. That's something really they should be doing. We shouldn't have to do their work for them.
Yeah, but, you know, it's like us, if somebody's grass is nine inches, we don't go out and look for that. We wait until somebody contacts us. You know, then we send our code person. So I think what, you know, PP&amp;L, we have to be good citizens and call them and say, hey, I just want to let you know on pole, blah, 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 you know, you do have, do have a burned-out light.
I'll do this tomorrow.
Okay.
I have the contact.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, by the way, PPL has a legislative liaison that is assigned to each district. The way it used to work, you'd go to your state representative with the pole number. State rep would call that legislative liaison, and they would take care of it right away. So that's how it used to work. When I say "used to," it was five, six years ago.
And one more question, Bill. The lights on North Mountain Road, are they there by the Legion? The ones you're referring to?
One light is at Blue Ridge Avenue and North Mountain Road. The other light is at Chapel Street, across from the elementary school and Mountain Road. They're on all the time. They don't go off. So there's probably something wrong with the sensor.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Board members, do we have any comments? Robin?
I have lots. The township was very busy this weekend. On Saturday afternoon, from four to six, we had our holiday jam over at the He Rose Grove. Approximately 3 to 350 people were there. Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus came. And a shout-out and a thank you to Parks and Recreation Board. They did a fantastic, great job. Everybody had a good, a good time. And the weather was in the 50s, so that was even better. Then Sunday morning, cops and cars and coffee out at Veteck. Unfortunately, it rained. But had a good turnout there also. And the New Jersey State Police came. And they brought a truckload full of toys for the Toys for Tots. They were in uniform, brought their cars. So thanks for the police department. Mike Lesovic and Chad Miller were out there from the police department. So good, good time in the morning, even though it rained. Then, as Bill said, they had the Linglestown tree lighting on Sunday night. Again, probably a good 3 to 350. And I want to, I know we're swearing in two fire police tonight, but I want to thank you for the job that the fire police do, because they are definitely republic safety on Sunday night with all the tractor and trailers going through and the people running, you know, running back and forth. So. So I'm just going to put a little shout-in for the Lower Paxton Community Foundation on Saturday from 10 to 4. They'll have the Kris Kringle Market, which will be blocked off from one roundabout to the other roundabout in the Village of Linglestown. There's 130 vendors, three entertainment stages, live nativity, lots of food. And the parking, if people are watching on TV, we're trying to emphasize that you please go out to Central Dauphin High School. There'll be three buses constantly running from 9:30 to 4:30. And you can hop the bus, and it'll drop you right off at the square. So, and again, it's supposed to be 56 degrees, so it'll be absolutely awesome. So I'm good. Do you have something you want to say?
No, I do not. Does anybody else have anything? No? Okay, very good. Managers' report.
Mr. Chairman, I have no official report this evening.
Very good. Thank you.
A good one.
Thank you, sir.
One of your best. We now proceed to old business, where we need to take action to adopt ordinance 23-05, this amending Chapter 165, solid waste of codified ordinances. Mr. Gottschall, I believe we've seen this before.
I'll take that. Mr. Chairman, so board members, in relation to the amendments as we originally presented at the business meeting, the last business meeting of last month, as the first reading, these amendments really just clean up the language in relation to the newly adopted contract with Penn Waste that moved to a container system and specify the size of containers within the details. But we'll certainly entertain any questions the board has at this time.
It looks like, Mr. Riller, the only change is with the sizes?
From the last time we had met, we put the changes into the size. And there was some cleanup, just to reference carts versus containers consistency, consistently through the language.
Okay.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve ordinance 23-05?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now need to take action to adopt ordinance 23-06, amending Chapter 176, establishing procedures for the installation of new streetlights. Again, we saw this previously. Mr. Gottschall, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, nothing has changed since the last draft of this ordinance, and it is ready at this time for board adoption.
Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 23-06?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We need to take action to adopt ordinance 23-08, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2024. And I believe Mr. Gonder is going to, you're aware of that, Ryan? You look a little surprised.
We actually, Carly, if you have that's going to present.
Okay, okay. You can share in the glamour.
Do I need to touch a button up here? This is on. Okay. Good evening. My name is Carly Kiesling. I'm with PFM, the financial advisor to the township. Also part of the financing team for the 2024 bond issuance. The rest of the financing team is mostly here as well. Ryan Gonder from McNeese is bond counsel. You have Liverdally and Ryan Brockman with Raymond James, and Mike Bova with RBC, and they are the two underwriters on this deal. So to give a quick backstory on this, we were here last week and spoke with the authority, and they saw pretty much the exact handout that it's going to very briefly run through for this. We have also previously met with Sam and Bill Weaver and GHD. And we've, PFM and the township and authority have had some conversations about the financing and getting it in place, sizing of it, some draw schedules. So we've had lots of conversations in the last couple of months with the financing team to move forward with that. So moving into our handout, we want to turn into the first page, page number two. So this is just an overview of our interest rate charts. It's a municipal bond yield, which the township's bonds will price off of. If we look at the first chart up top, this is a snapshot of the full 30-year index over the past 25 years or so. I know you're hearing a lot of stuff about the Fed raising rates, the mortgage rates being extremely high, but that's not actually the case for the municipal bond market. If you look at the red line on the top, on the top graph, that's the average yield curve over the last 25 years or so. And where we're currently at is the blue line, which you see is slightly under the red line. And it's also interesting that the front of the yield curve on the blue line is higher and dips. It's inverted currently than long-term rates. So that actually means that your borrowing rates long-term are less than what the short-term interest yield, interest rate yields are, which I can get into on the next page when we touch on topics. The next two charts really just are a snapshot of the 10-year, which isn't quite applicable for what the township is looking to do, considering they're doing a longer 25-year borrowing. But the red box really just shows a snapshot of post-COVID, how rates have remained, for the most part, relatively steady, still definitely around historical averages. I know we all got used to the historical lows of COVID for a while, but we're still in an excellent interest rate environment for the township to go into the bond market. The second, page number three here is just a brief topics overview. I know there's a lot of words on this page. So it pretty much sums up that the 2024 bonds are going to be approximately $16.3 million. They'll be issued via the subsidy between the township and the authority, which I believe is how it's been done previously. Ryan will touch base on the subsidy agreement and the ordinance for this once we wrap up the handout overview. The goal is to price these bonds in early 2024. And they're currently set up to be a 25-year structure for, for the debt. Number three is interesting, because it ties into what I just touched on, on the yield. Due to current yield curve, an issuer may pay lower interest rates on its debt versus the investment of bond proceeds, which essentially means the township could go out and they could borrow long-term debt at, you know, four and a half percent or so, turn around and invest those bond proceeds in a higher rate, between like five, five and a quarter, five and a half, depending on where it's investing, its bond proceeds. So you're able to earn interest earnings, which you can then put towards the project and help downsize the ultimate borrowing size. At the bottom, the parameters ordinance, this is a very high level of what Ryan's going to go over. You'll see in Ryan's ordinance, there is a slightly higher number of $19.3 million and a slightly higher interest rate of 6.5%. Those are just the absolute top end of the parameters. We kind, we legally have to structure a deal with a maximum parameters. We would never issue more than what's needed for the project and more than what the township authorizes us to fund for the current bond issue. It ultimately gives us the flexibility to enter the market whenever the best time is to price these bonds and to size the bond issue in the most advantageous way for the township. Moving on to the next page, this is just a general overview of the township's entire debt portfolio. Each of the columns from 2 to 10 are the breakout debt service associated to their respective bond issuance. And column 11 is what the township pays on an annual basis for its debt service. So you can see there is a slight drop-off starting in 2039, which plays into how we're structuring the 2024 deal. More important to this deal is the following page, which is the sewer fund allocation debt service. So these are all of the bonds that are specifically allocated to sewer fund projects of the township. Column 10 is the total annual debt service of the sewer fund, and that is structured similarly in that it's leveled at about nine and a half million until about 2039, and then there is a slight drop-off in debt until the final maturity in 2050. Before I get into the draw schedule, does anyone have any questions this time? Okay. Page numbered six is a draw schedule for the 2024 issuance. We've worked with Sam and Bill, along with the folks at GHD, who have a very intensive draw schedule, and we've whittled it down to just be focused solely on the 2024 deal. Columns four through nine kind of break out all of the monthly draws and expenses for the projects that will be covered with these bond proceeds. If you look into column 12, you can see 16.3 hitting at around April of 2024, which would time to when we expect this bond issuance to settle and for the township and authority to have the bond proceeds in hand. Column 13 just gives an estimated overview of interest earnings that we project the authority is able to earn on said bond proceeds. And of all of those interest earnings, those can be put, ultimately put towards the project to fund needs of the project and ultimately downsize the bond issue size if they were to come in higher than expected. Switching to page seven, then. This is the overview of the capital plan of the authority we've worked with, Bill and Sam, to kind of fine-tune this. What we're really focused on, on this page, is just column one and nine, or the blue boxes. That is the debt service that we are estimating to be, with, estimating to be for the 2024 bond issuance. You'll notice that the first 15 to 20 years are a lot lower. And that's because we're structuring this as a wrap. So we're taking principal and putting it, or filling it into where the authority has a drop-off in its current debt service in 2040, which allows us to have a smoother onboarding of debt service in terms of rates for the authority, and so that they can, so that there isn't just a massive hit all at once. And all four subsequent issuances are also structured the same way, which gets us to column 15, which is what we would estimate the sewer fund total debt service to look like after the five phases of debt through 2036. And then column 16 gives a nice overview of the budgetary impact as that debt phases onto the debt portfolio. Page eight and nine are more for Sam. It's the backup amortization of an estimated bond issue, given conservative rates in today's market. So that he'll ultimately use for budgeting, once that becomes finalized and the bond is priced. And then if we get to page 10, that's just the financing schedule for this. You can see that we've already done a couple of things regarding information requests and getting some documents set up. Like I said, we were here last week, and we spoke with the authority. Tonight, the supervisors will consider the maximum parameters ordinance that Ryan will go over after this. And should you guys authorize the financing team to proceed through January into February, we would do all of the necessary due diligence and documentation to gear up to enter the bond market in early February. So at that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions?
I might have asked this at authority, but I'm not too sure. How long do we have to spend the money? Kara?
So the draw schedule that GHD provided us kind of gave us an outline of what they expect the expenses to be for the projects associated with the 16.3. So that has you spending this through April of 2027, which is when the authority and township, I think, anticipate a potential next borrowing. So that would fund all of those projects that are slated from early next year through early 2027.
I think I remember you saying that now, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Of course.
Any additional questions?
I will turn it over to Ryan Gonder with McNeese to run through the ordinance with you guys then. Thank you.
And now, Ryan.
Thank you, Carly, and thank you, Chairman Henry and members of the board. As Carly mentioned, and Chairman Henry mentioned, I'm Ryan Gonder from McNeese, Wallace &amp; Nurk, bound, bond counsel for lower Paxton Township. Tonight, I am here to discuss ordinance 23-08, which authorizes the township board of supervisors to, for the general obligation bond series of 2024, a maximum aggregate principal amount of $19.3 million. And also approval within that ordinance of all related documents for this deal, including the subsidy agreement between the township and the authority. Just, I know a lot of the folks here on the board have gone through ordinances like this. But just for the record, I'll go through it in brief summary form. But if there's any questions, just let me know. I'm happy to answer them. Most importantly, it's backed by the full faith and credit taxing power of the township, which means that if, for whatever reason, there's a default, you could be sued and be forced to raise taxes to pay and cover the debt service related to this bond, the issuance of these bonds. So that's, that's something we always want to mention. We also want to mention that it's been properly advertised last week and in accordance with the Sunshine Act and Leguda. So it's ready for consideration. It's been reviewed by a solicitor. And it, some of the disclosures are related to the non-taxable nature of the, of the bonds and some of the ongoing disclosures that are required in accordance with the Leguda. So you'll see some language in the ordinance regarding those disclosures. And finally, as I mentioned, it approves a subsidy agreement, which effectively allows the township to not, well, first, it requires the authority, basically, to generate enough revenues to cover the debt service on, on the bonds. And it also then enables the township to not have to report this in your debts, in your debt statements. So it won't count against the township going forward as it looks for other borrowing opportunities. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Ryan, after you said we could be sued, I didn't hear anything you said after that.
Sorry to scare you, Chairman Zoomus. I don't expect that to be an issue, but it's just something that we find important as bond counsel to add as a reminder.
Board members, comments? Wow, y'all have done a great job explaining it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonder.
Thank you.
So, that being the case, we need to take action to adopt ordinance 23-08, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, this being Series 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you for your hard work on this. I know these are very complicated things, and, Mr. Bova, good to see you again. We've been interacting on these things, how long did you say it's been?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, going back to the Dauphin County General Authority in Dauphin County. So, good to see you again.
And Chairman, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bova, came clear from Pittsburgh for this this evening, so thank you. At least it's not snowing like a couple times you came in.
Too bad you didn't bring a Steeler win with you. That was, we've been to Steeler games together, and now this one was not fun this week. The Eagle fans share our misery, right, Chris?
Yeah, it would take a miracle.
Okay, we do have some new business to conduct, and we are going to begin with the administration of the loyalty oath. We have two new members of the Linglestown Fire Company Fire Police, William Metzger and Brian Webb, and...
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment before we start?
Absolutely.
Thank you. This moment right now for these guys is a very important part of their lives right This is the difficult part, I'm going to make it look easy. I can remember back when I started my law enforcement career being sworn in. It's a memory you carry for life. Mrs. Lindsay, your husband would know that as well, and it's very endearing to these men, and especially to their families, and we appreciate what you're doing here tonight, and I just want you to know that this carries a lot of weight with what they're doing here, and we certainly appreciate that. All right, enough, get up.
(laughter) If you would step right over here, and I guess we have some things that we'll need to sign when we're done. You have the badges? Why don't we turn around so the audience can see you, and so the mystery shows you can get some great pictures? Why don't we start out with Ryan? Ryan, if you would raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth
the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
and that I will discharge the duties of fire police officer
and I will discharge the duties of fire police officer
for Lower Paxton Township
for Lower Paxton Township.
with fidelity.
with fidelity.
Congratulations.
(applause)
What makes you nervous right now? You might want to turn around, just give a little shout-out.
We have the...
I'm sorry, I'll stand by in case we get an argument. Congratulations.
Very good.
And now, Mr. Metzger, raise your right hand, please. I, William Metzger
I, William Metzger.
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth
the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of fire police officer
of fire police officer
for Lower Paxton Township
for Lower Paxton Township
with fidelity
with fidelity.
And members of the board, when you come up, and any family members that wish to be with your family member, we have a little bit of duty we have to perform here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Excellent. Congratulations. Get in there. Sorry about that. Everybody get unnaturally close. All right. Put my light, please. All right, thank you. Go ahead and do that. Whatever time you need. You guys want to come up? Yes. I would gladly. Whoa, I'm still going to get in. Get in here. Let's get that the other way. That's much better. Hold on. Okay. Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. Check it first, check it first. Oh, it's kind of even look at it. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you. It sounds faintly...
What else we got here? Okay. Those are always the highlight of the meeting when we get to have new folks join us in this. Okay, now we need to take action to adopt resolution 2023-31, establishing signatory authority for the PennDOT Crash Information Tool Electronic Access Agreement. Mr. Godshaw?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this action this evening, this resolution as well as the agreement pertains to a grant that the board has become pleasantly aware of with regard to the police department. This grant, as you are aware, was formerly with the county, and now is a township-administered grant for the entire county. The county has placed its trust in the township to properly administer this grant, and so in so doing, the department needs signatory authority, which would be provided to the township manager, to then allow access to the PennDOT's crash information tool through their website, so that's what this resolution allows us to do. So I'd be happy to help answer any questions if the board may have any at this moment.
Brad, what is the cost going to be to us? Because I read about the software and everything.
No cost to us, ma'am, and if any cost is incurred, the grant would cover that. Additionally, Sam could provide information relative to the grant, but it does provide administration cost to be covered through the grant, so
Okay.
we're totally covered.
Great, thank you.
Brad, do you want to explain, what do we use this data for?
Sir, we'd have to get more information to you, but essentially, it's, this grant is, again, it's a countywide grant, I believe, related to DUI enforcement and other traffic-related enforcement measures, and again, it was formerly a county program that allowed municipalities throughout the county to apply, to have, you know, overtime cost reimbursed through that fund, and so now, you know, the township will be administering it and will be distributing funds to other municipalities to help them defray cost in whatever, you know, overtime-related enforcement they have within their departments. But I can get you a list certainly of what specific enforcement activities would be.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to save us some time, probably, from having, you don't have to go through the county.
Good point, yeah, it would save us certainly local time as well as it would allow us greater access to the funds here locally as well.
And this is something where the county asked us
Correct.
to administer it, so we're kind of new at it, so when we hear you saying, you know, you have to get back for more details, this is because we are newly administering it, and the county said, can you please help us out with this?
That's what we're doing. Yes, sir.
Nice, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we need to take action to adopt resolution 2023-31. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to...
No, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We now need to take action to approve an easement agreement with Violia Water, Pennsylvania.
Yes, members of the board, this agreement with Violia is relatively straightforward. Violia is looking to do a project which will take a slight sliver of land within Cole Memorial Park, not take, but allow them to, you know, do construction through a slight sliver of that land, and so this easement agreement would allow Violia to get their project, much-needed project, completed through our land.
Any questions?
Is it going through land or is it going through the parking lot?
Um...
I was just curious if they were going to be tearing up the parking lot.
Yeah, we do have an exhibit here, let's see, that's, that's, it is attached to the agreement. I'm actually sure, looks like it's just vacant, would it land, ma'am?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the Public Works Director has notified us that this should be very minimal input or disruption to the park or anything. In fact, we didn't even take it to the parking rec board because it would be no...
I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, the ways on the streets were tore up, so...
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else, questions, comments? Okay, can we have a motion to take action to approve the easement agreement with Violia Water, Pennsylvania?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
This takes us to subdivision and land development improvement guarantees, of which I believe there's, what, two?
Two.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
Mr. Chairman?
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
This takes us to the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve payment of bills for the Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any additional announcements other than a reminder and an invitation for everybody to join us in Linglestown on Saturday morning, what, 10 o'clock?
10 to 4.
10 to 4.
It's opening ceremony.
10 o'clock?
Quarter to 10.
Quarter to 10, 9:45? Okay, 9:45 opening ceremonies, and the whole thing kicks off at 10 o'clock. It's Chris Kendall's mart in Linglestown. Weather is looking good this year, so we should have a great day in the town of St. Thomas. Now, the next meeting of this board will be a workshop one week from today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in this room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.